Good evening. Call to order the R V S school committee meeting of September ninth, 2025. Will all rise and salute the flag?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Cobb, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Bronston Rizzo. Mr. Cagiano.
Yep.
Mr. Kingston.
Here.
Ms. Milbury Ellis.
Present.
Mrs. Monteroso.
Present.
Mr. Sinella.
President.
Mayor Keefe.
Yeah, we have first order of business is any recognition? We do not have any. So we have the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bronston Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Cagiano.
Yes.
Mr. Kingston.
Yes.
Ms. Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Ms. Monteroso.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Mayor Keefe.
Yes. Student representative report. I don't believe we have a student representative attendance there. Do we?
We don't have the students present, but we, she did submit a report. So what I can do is just take us through that quickly. Give me just a second here.
While you're assembling that, I believe that our student representative is playing soccer. So hopefully competing on the field, doing well. We wish her luck.
That's great. So I will just run through this report very briefly. And the first thing that they were sharing was again, the general law that includes students as part of the school committee. And having meetings with the school committee and students is required. They shared about the sunrise event that they had back the first week of school. And I don't know if you can all see the picture, but it was pretty amazing. There was a large group of students who came to Revere Beach for their sunrise event at 5:15 a.m. on August 29th. So it was right after we came back to school. Good for them. Great job. And they said they had a great time for all. It was the first time they've held this event, but hopefully it'll continue into the future. They wanted to celebrate the groundbreaking of the new Revere High School, which we all joined them in. And they had a couple of photos from that. And they said students are very excited, very happy, knowing that this big, beautiful project is underway and we are too. For clubs and activities, they said all of the clubs at RHS are up and have begun to run. I know they've been doing some recruiting. Last week they gathered the opinions of students and they're excited to join the variety of after-school clubs that RHS has to offer. And they talked about their first ever, I think it's the first, maybe I'm wrong about that, a homecoming dance that is going to be on Thursday, September 18th at the Beauchamp VFW. And the theme is under the sea. So everybody's definitely very excited for that. And I believe that's it.
Okay. Thank you for your interpretation of the student report, Dr. Kelly.
I hope I did it justice.
Did alright. Okay. At this point, we have public speak. Ms. Monteroso, do we have anyone that wishes to publicly speak on any of the items on the agenda tonight?
No one in person, Zoom? Okay. Motion to close public comment, public speak.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mayor, we need to go back to the consent calendar for a vote.
We already voted, Ms. Bronston Rizzo, you said yes.
Well, thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. Okay, closing public speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms., Dr. Kelly, the superintendent report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the first order of business under the superintendent's report is the introduction of our new food services team. And I'm very excited to see the entire group showed up for us tonight. I'm going to begin by introducing Chris Callahan, who is the regional director for all of New England. And he's going to introduce the R V S specific team, including Martha Franklin, who is our director. Kim, I'm not going to try your last name because I'll get it wrong.
That's Krukonis Atkins.
Krukonis Atkins, who is our executive chef, and Justin Lepore, who is a Revere native and is on as our assistant director, Revere High grad. But I'll bring Chris up to say a little bit more about everybody.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight.
And actually, if I can say one more thing, Chris, before you start, I want to thank you for being our man on the street as we went through this transition throughout the summer. I know that Matt Cruz and I reached out to you quite a bit, trying to make sure we had everything lined up and ready to go for the start of the school year before you had the team in place. And so we very much appreciate that.
Oh, I appreciate your support too. I've been in, again, Chris Callahan, I've been, I cover New England for Chartwells. And, but I've been in school dining services for 30 years. And it's nice to understand the community, first of all. It's like, great, great to be back. I was here 13 years ago, helping with the program back then. And a lot has changed, but a lot has stayed the same. So, and I appreciate that and the community. It's a funny story. When I was actually touring the schools at the beginning, probably half the staff is still here. And half of them remembered me. I got so many hugs when I returned, so they were very excited to have us back. And that made it so much easier to, at least knowing the community, knowing a lot of the staff members who do a great job and just starting the transition off to a great start. So I appreciate that. I've been, I spent the last two or three months here. And again, as I, I will still be here very often first couple of months and then kind of slowly back off a little bit. I do cover other districts, but we've got a great team that we recruited. And you had mentioned their names, Martha, Martha Franklin, he's here. She actually brings a lot of experience from higher ed, high-volume feeding. So colleges and so that brings it, it's nice because some of our, again, when we, when our students leave schools, they go to college and they get a different. It's very similar to high school feeding, but stations and whatnot. So it's great to have Martha here with her background. And I always, I tell the team here, we get the students, we get our customers first. We start the customers at the elementary level. And we have the privilege of starting their relationship with food services at an early level. So anything we can do in terms of education and continue to develop the program for, for Revere is a great opportunity, great privilege for us as well. Second, we have Kimberly Krukonis Atkins, who brings a lot of culinary experience. She's a culinary director for North Bridge for a while. She was actually a school food service director in New Hampshire for a while as well, covering a smaller district. So she's got some good school experience. She brings a nice culinary flair to the team. And then we have Justin Lepore, who you mentioned, who's actually a graduate of Revere. You know, I didn't, I didn't, I saw his resume and it was kind of unique when I saw the resume. And I kind of passed over it pretty quickly. First of all, because he had so much different experiences, like, wow, I'm going to take a look at that and bring it. But then I got a reference from a couple of people in Revere who knew Justin. So I took a second look, brought him in, and I really liked what I saw. We talked, spoke. He's got a good background and he ran a restaurant for his, for his aunt and uncle, La Familia.
Familia.
In North Boston. And, and also he's got a good experience with cyber, cyber experience for computers also and social media. So it really kind of helps us bring student engagement together full circle. So we'll use Justin's experience and really kind of bring in student engagement, community engagement for food services. So, but again, we're very happy to be here. And we'll come back to visit as much as you like to update you on the program. And we're after a great start. The students are excited. Pizza sales are out through the roof for a couple of weeks. When we started here, they said they were serving 20 a day. Now they're up to 50 at the high school. So, so it's, it's nice to see the students engaged and we'll want to keep that going to keep on developing the program based on what the students want to sell. Is there any questions for me or the team? We're here.
Any of the members have any questions? Did you bring any pizza to sample?
No, we did bring some, some healthy food.
Okay, we'll take the healthy stuff.
There is cookies there too, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We look forward, we look forward to the participation and the collaboration.
Great.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just mention one more thing, and this is probably more for Justin and Martha, but the students have already come to see me to see if I could arrange a meeting where they could talk to you about menus and what's upcoming. I told them I would relay that and that we could work through Mr. Bowen to make that happen up here at the high school.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it. Yeah.
We actually, I don't know if you've been in the cafeteria at all, but we are trying to rebrand basically the snack corner and trying to get some student engagement and letting them name it and kind of give them a prize for, for whatever name.
Whatever name gets picked.
Gets picked.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. We have, we have the McKinley School project, and I know Tom Skorowski is here to give an update. Before that. I did want to mention that our student representative is here. We went through your report, but more importantly, how was the game?
We put up a good fight, but we lost two to one.
Oh.
Okay.
You'll get them next time.
You came in second, it's okay.
Can't win them all. That's right. I went very briefly through your report. We did put it up on the board and I read everything that you had on there. So hopefully that's sufficient.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So the next item on the superintendent's report is, actually, there's three items B, C, and D on your agenda. B is the McKinley Project, the early childhood update, which I promised we would get for you. Then there's the Lincoln Playground update. And the third is the map C update regarding the lottery and the determination of neighborhoods around our middle schools to go to a middle school neighborhood model, neighborhood middle school model down the road as opposed to the lottery. And as the mayor just mentioned, that we've invited the city planner, Tom Skorowski, who's going to take us through a presentation that encompasses all three of those ideas. So I'll invite Tom up and I will share his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to talk with you today about three projects that couldn't be less related, except that I happen to be managing them within my department. But they're all really exciting projects and looking forward to talking about them with you. So, oh, I'm seeing the slides up there. Great. Alright, so the first one I want to talk about, most importantly, is the McKinley School redesign. A project we've been working on for the last year, year and a half or so. So it's really multiple projects in one. The McKinley School in the existing 1904 building will be housing the early childhood education center. And in the basement, the retirement and parking offices. And then in the new wing, the 1924 wing, which you see to your right, that will be the Metro North Regional Emergency Communications Center, also known as MREC, which is essentially the 911 call center for Revere, Chelsea, and Winthrop. We recently added Chelsea to that group. So it's essentially a historic rehab on both ends. And then in the middle, there'll be new construction and a sort of common corridor. I don't know why that's there, to be honest. You can keep going. Just to give you a few elevations of what it'll look like. The intended goal of this, aside from bringing some key municipal programs onsite here, is also just enlivening this beautiful historic building and bringing back its grandeur. So this is what you'll see on the one side. This is the MREC side. Has a little bit more of a modern flair to it, particularly in the central corridor, but you're probably less interested in that. So I'll keep on going. And then in the back, we've got the parking, and that's where the access will be for the retirement board on the right and the parking department on the left. If you ever park in one of our meters and stay a little bit too long, that's where you'll be going. And here's what it looks like in the front. You can see we'll be redesigning the space, creating some beautiful public spaces in the front. I think one of the things we identified throughout the planning process, working with all three user groups in the community, is we really have a dearth of good green space in the area that, you know, feels like a welcoming place where people can gather. So there'll be a place right in the middle where, you know, parents drop off their, their little ones in the morning and kind of gather and connect. And they'll, I'll show you in just a minute, the playgrounds on the left. And then kind of a common area on the right-hand side where the early childhood center teachers can take their kids and, you know, do fun stuff outside. Ground cover planting plan, just to show you, we're planting a lot of things, trees, shrubs, landscaping. We're going to make it look really nice and I think be a great gem and amenity for the neighborhood. And here is the entry to the preschool itself. You can see in, in the front of the building, we have crafted in partnership with Melissa, Melissa Lomas and the team at the Early Childhood Center, a really age-appropriate opportunity for kids to, to really play and interact and get a lot of that outdoor time that is sorely needed during the school day. And then the main entry plaza, which will also include an ADA accessible ramp up to the front door. Probably difficult to see, but hopefully you can get a closer look on your monitors. Essentially, this will be eight classroom spaces. And in the entryway, there'll be, you know, a welcoming center as well as administrative offices. And then again, the first and the second floor will be eight classrooms and restrooms and all the necessary facilities. Are we looking at the basement plan there? It's actually like impossible for me to see what I'm looking at from, from this monitor.
Yeah, it says lower level.
Okay, so the lower level is where there'll be custodial staff will have their offices and kind of storage space and things like that. And you can see the first floor and some renderings of kind of the interior and what we aim to make that look like, again, being a very welcoming space and age-appropriate. And then the second floor is much of the same, adding those additional classroom spaces. And the third floor is a really exciting space, both for the school and the community. It will be an indoor play center because we are in New England and we can't always play outside. It is an adaptable space that can serve the needs of the children during the daytime. And also has workspace for the, for the educators and a kitchenette. And ultimately, in the evenings, could be a place where we hold community events, which is also something we have a difficult time finding quality space for community events. So it can be an adaptable space that works for the schools during the day, but for the community in the evening. And here you can see in kind of a full site plan review, we've got the, the parking on the Foster Street side and then on the Eamon Street entrance as well. We'll also be heavily utilizing the on-street parking. You all have driven through that area. You understand how tight it is to find parking. We did an analysis working with the three different user groups and kind of exhausted, exhaustively worked with them on figuring out what the parking needs that we all collectively had were. And we feel like this site plan adequately addresses that. Although we will be looking with the on-street parking at calling out specific spaces designated for pickup and drop-off hours, particularly in the morning, and also educator and staff parking. And this is the full overview of the, the building program. I won't belabor the point because I talked about it quite a bit. But I will note the Metro North Center, we will be bringing Chelsea into the fold when we open this facility up. Currently, MREC serves both Revere and Winthrop. But this consolidation creates some really nice efficiencies between the three communities. Helps us make sure we have sort of common communications amongst our 911 folks and ultimately also is a huge cost savings for the city. And there you see it again at the elevation. And that's really, I'll just stop here and take any questions you might have about the full project.
Can I add one thing, Tom?
Yes.
Just in this center corridor, right at the middle of the building, which is in between the early childhood center on the left and the MREC building on the right, is where all of the elevators and the shared spaces, so the whole building will be fully accessible.
Yes.
You know, which isn't the case right now. So that's why you see kind of this clunky in-between, in the middle between the two buildings. That's where all of the elevators and things like that will be. There'll still be separate entrances.
Correct.
But it allows us to have the economy of the closeness of the elevators, have the elevator bays and the electrical and all the things necessary in order to run that.
Yep. Everything's connected there, but yeah, three uses that necessarily need to be separate for security and other purposes. So it's a good innovation there.
Mr. Kingston.
Tom, thank you for the work on this project. My biggest concern is parking. And when I originally heard about the project, I didn't know about the parking clerk and the retirement, which I understand the city's paying rent. It's a great idea and it's be a great savings for the city, you know, long-term. But I'm concerned about the number of spaces, just like employee spaces. And what, you know, where people gonna, like people that have to visit those offices, where, where are they gonna?
Right, so.
And also in the front, like I'm thinking if there's eight classrooms, that's eight teachers, there'll be some other people there, support staff and whatever. So like 12 spaces. And if you go down Eamon Street tonight, or even today, let's go down Eamon Street like today at 12 o'clock.
Right.
There's a ton of cars in there now. And the school's empty.
So we talked with each of the three user groups and put together the list of what our parking needs are. I think the, the one time where we will need additional parking, in which we would use the, the Central Ave lot is, or rather the City Hall lot, the municipal lot, would be when there's large training events taking place at the, the MREC facility. So although the 911 call center is quite large, at any given time, you actually have a small number of employees that are, are operating out of the building. And then the retirement center and the retirement board and the parking department, as they sit today, don't have any parking. And they're in the exact same location. So we feel like that can work under those existing conditions, although we will be adding those spaces on the Foster Street side in the rear. I think our trickiest problem to solve for is pickup and drop-off. And I think that's something we'll be working on as we construct the site. And it's going to be a mix of signage and enforcement. And, you know, we looked at whether we could do parallel, or rather. do parallel, or rather, sort of nose-in parking, and maybe create a more convenient condition for parents. I have three young kids, two of them are in early childhood care, and I know how difficult it is to pull in, and, you know, get them out of the car seat and get them to school. But it created some safety hazards for people coming off of Eamon Street, and it ultimately actually didn't add any parking. So this, we think accommodates our needs. We actually added some additional parking than what's there today. And, you know, we think in those cases of overflow, we can always use the City Hall lot.
Okay. You can come back there. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I forgot the question. Can I have another turn?
Sure, take your time. I know, Ms. Rizzo, Ms. Rizzo, do you have your hand raised?
Yeah.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Tom, for showing this building. I worked at McKinley for 24 years, and I hate seeing change, and I miss it. But the building's gorgeous. It's got its parking. We had over 50 people on staff that parked there, so I'm sure it could be worked out somehow. I'm just so excited about the Early Childhood Program, along with the city program. So thank you for this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. And just so, Tom, I don't know if the slide shows, there's parking in the rear of the building, the Foster Street side, for staff, for the 911 staff, for school staff. And there will be some visitor spots. I think there's in the tune of 30 or so, possibly, all in?
Altogether, I think there's over 40, but that might take into account some of the on-street.
Correct. Okay.
I thought I made that. I'm sorry.
Mr. Kingston.
Just based on the pictures, Tom, are you taking, and I don't, I'm just curious, because it doesn't, it doesn't look right to me. Are we taking, are you taking part of Eamon Street back? It looks like that space in front of the school just isn't there. I mean, I've walked by there, and I've been in that school a thousand times, and I don't remember that much space out front, I guess.
There's more than you think. But also, the renderings have a way of making things seem more expansive than they might be. I mean, you know what, we're not taking any of Eamon Street back. We actually considered that, but are working within the right-of-way.
Okay. Must be just the way the pictures are. Thank you.
Mr. Cacciato.
No, thank you for the presentation. But on the right side of the building, where we used to call them the courts, is that going to be all parking for the school?
It will be shared between the school and EMREC.
Okay. Thank you.
If you, Paul Amato, if you can put up the site that I have shown right now. Here are the handful of spots in the back of the building that Tom was talking about, that would service the two city departments that are going to be back there, Retirement and Parking.
Parking.
And as you mentioned, those departments have no parking right now, so this would hopefully be an asset to them. And in addition to all of the parking here in the courts, as Mr. Cacciato called them, there are all of these spots that will be out front. And what we had talked a little bit about was making this part here, I hope you can see where I'm moving my mouse, would be zoned off for drop-off and pickup. But if you look at all the spots that are now in the courts, and then the other ones that are out in front, there should be ample parking for the, you know, probably 12 or 13 staff members we would have, and the maybe six, seven, or eight that would be in the
EMREC.
EMREC building at any particular given time.
That was going to be my question, about the zoned-off area, knowing that that street, how narrow it is. And I could foresee a nightmare trying to...
Yeah. And then outside of school hours, if there was a training here, or something like that, then this parking would be open to neighbors, or to, you know, folks who might be coming here for an EMREC training in the evening.
Anyones have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Tom, good job.
So I, in between two really complicated projects, put a fun, simple one in between to break up conversation. So the Lincoln Street Tot Lot is next. So I think this started roughly a year ago. We were given the task to do some preliminary research to see what we could do with $65,000. Originally, the ask was to include a port-in-place rubber surfacing, which you might see in a lot of city parks. That probably would have eaten up that entire budget and then some. So instead, we just looked at what we could do with the existing funding that we have. So the scope of the project includes removing the existing mulch, the existing play structures, installing new play structures that are age-appropriate for 2 to 5, installing new mulch, repairing the double gate closest to the parking lot, and replacing some of the wood timbers there. What is in scope is there's a tree nearest to the roof that needs to be removed for safety, but that'll actually be done in-house by the Revere Public Schools team. So some of the new structures, you'll see in just a second, six-foot benches, drum and sensory panels, curved balance beam. My kids love running on those. And actually, the Challenger design is something similar that I've seen in Tot Lots, beam pole climb, a lookout sensory panel, store window for, you know, imaginary play, as if you're in a store, two slides and a rock wall. And again, it's all designed for kids under five years old, with an appropriate fall height of five feet. And then a moon rock, which you'll see, it's a small tunnel sculpture that the kids can kind of climb on. All right. There you have it. And in terms of timeline, we're going to, it took a long time to get us here, but now that we have a scope together, we solicited written quotes, we selected a vendor, we got, are working on a purchase order right now, and aim to complete this work in November, starting construction sometime around mid-October. Any questions, sir?
Thank you.
Sorry, is that site completion?
This November, yes.
Mr. Snell.
Tom, through you, we went up on a site location with Carl's bench, he was concerned about the ropes, he was concerned about the angle, the small wall, and everything else. So this will all be taken into the new plans, or no surprises later?
Yeah, no, it's been, all been done in coordination with Carl and his team. And Carl and his team will actually be removing the root, the tree, and the roots and all that concern.
We originally had thought it was going to be just a simple, you know, this, 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 that. And he walked up, he really went through a list of...
Carl has a way of doing that. When he finds a project, he can poke all the holes in and figure that out. So yeah, we've been coordinating with him to make sure this is done right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. All right, now for the finish.
Grand finale. So the third project, you know, about a month, month and a half ago, Dr. Kelly and the mayor and I had started talking about what we could do to rethink in light of, you know, the revised transportation plan for the city. Some differing enrollments, both for the middle school, and I would add the two elementary schools in question, Beechmont School and the Paul Revere, where similar questions are had about sort of allocation of students amongst the various schools. So, you know, our goal here, in partnership with MAPC, is to basically model out a series of scenarios, where we're looking at some criteria, and basically using geo-processing, basically map-based data, to collect about these various criteria. So on the academic side, we want to make sure that we are placing kids in schools that have the capacity to serve them, right? Student-teacher ratios that are appropriate, that are approaching but not at the capacity of the schools. We have the appropriate percentage of ELL students, so we're not placing all of the students where English is not their first language into one school, and concentrating everything in one school, but more sort of distributing evenly those needs. And similarly, percentage of students with special needs, or percentage of students on an IEP, similarly, making sure we're kind of spreading out the needs throughout the school district, so we can effectively meet the needs of our kids in each of our schools. And then, from the standpoint of an equity criteria, we want to make sure we are balancing out the percentage of students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And, you know, from a race and ethnicity standpoint, keeping the demographics of the city on par with our schools, and not seeing a huge variation one way or another. Aside from, you know, just being the right thing to do, it can also create some vulnerabilities on the city side for civil rights litigation, whether from the state or the federal government, if we are sort of concentrating certain student groups in certain schools. And, you know, we've all heard the tales of how that's been done wrong in other communities. I actually think most recently, I want to say Philadelphia, did an effort like this, and wasn't mindful of it, and actually, it did receive a series of lawsuits because of how they were concentrating poverty and different groups of students in particular schools. So we want to make sure we're keeping an eye out towards equity when we're doing this work. And then also, neighborhood criteria. So the percentage of students that are within a mile of the school, one thing, to make sure that, you know, we can have an effective baseline to see if we can get as many kids as possible, where they can walk and bike, and, most importantly, not have to have their parents drive them to school. And the percentage of students with a pedestrian-friendly route. So as you all know, it's one thing to live within a mile of the school in Revere, it's another to be able to walk to that school, because there's a lot of, you know, heavy-stress routes, whether you're crossing over Squire Road or Route 16 to get to your school. You know, we see the kids crossing over at Bell Circle, right? And that's, yeah, they can do it, it's approximate, but it's not necessarily as safe as we'd like it to be. And we're actually making improvements on Bell Circle. On one slight tangent, you might see that pedestrian signal that we're installing at the end of Harrah Street. One of many things we're hoping to do in that area to make safer connections between points east and west in the city, but I digress. But the main point of this neighborhood criteria is just to make sure that students are living near the schools that they will be at, and they actually have a way to walk or bike or roll to those places. And then finally, we're going to be looking at growth projections where we can. I actually brought this to MAPC, and they felt like it was out of their abilities to, on a, they do population projections across the region and within individual cities, but looking on more of a micro scale within neighborhoods, they felt like that's a methodologically a very difficult thing to do. I want to try to figure out a method to balance that in some way. Like, we obviously know, for example, in Beechmont Neighborhood, we're about to build 3,000 units of housing. Suffolk Downs, I think we can fairly assume that there's going to be some students coming from that development over time. So we need to think of a way to build those broader growth projections into our modeling. It won't be perfect, probably more art than science, but we'll do what we can. And then our goal is to essentially develop some criteria for these various things, and from a data standpoint, what we'd like to see, and then present three different scenarios to the school committee for you all to decide on. So in terms of timing, I think that's the next slide. We're looking to commence the data analysis this September, complete the modeling in December, and then present some scenarios to the school committee December, January of 2026. So at that, happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ayesha, Ms. Milbury-Hall, and then Mr. Kingston.
We had talked about this briefly, but I'm just wondering, two of the schools are SBA, well, have elementary schools in them, that are already neighborhood schools. Isn't that something that we could look at, if we have schools that are already essentially neighborhood schools, even though they serve the dual purposes?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's, I won't speak to how things are allocated today, but that's certainly the intent. If those neighborhood schools already exist from an elementary school level, we'd certainly like to transition into that from a middle school level. I think conceptually, we can all agree that makes sense.
And I guess make it sure that all of those checkmarks that you had previously presented, you know, are still met with respect to the equitable variables, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Kingston.
Tom, I really want to say thank you. I know this is extra work for you, other than, you know, kind of on the school side. My big question is, when will that pedestrian walkway be open? Because I think it's awesome.
So, good question. We aren't quite sure yet. The biggest holdup is actually related to utility work. So a lot of folks have called and complained to us about all the work that the city's doing on that parkway. But actually, a lot of it is national grid. So there's national grid gas and electric work taking place, and both of which are creating some unique entrances to our ability to get that project done. Ideally, we're getting it done before the end of this year. But if we're not actually able to power on the signals, it would be the spring, when the construction moratorium lifts.
Thank you, because that's great. I think it's, because I get nervous, kids crossing Bell Circle, and hopefully we'll prevent that, because they'll have another place to cross.
Yeah.
So that's great. Thank you.
That's the goal.
That's awesome.
And on top of that, Tom and his team are working on additional pedestrian crossings throughout the community that weren't mentioned tonight, potentially the Mount Ave intersection that goes towards the high school, Mount Ave and Broadway, and a few others that we were able to secure some funding and properly plan. So those may not happen this school year, but those are in the works to make sure that we have safe pathways to schools for our students and for our public.
We got a $400,000 grant from the feds that we thought was getting taken away from us. We learned this week that we actually get to keep it, that we'll be analyzing some possibilities, including a pedestrian bridge. A lot of other communities similarly styled have something like that. It's expensive, but actually, the most complicated thing is a right-of-way standpoint. And you actually have between the existing high school campus, the new high school campus, and the Amazon site in between, you have three property owners for a very large chunk of land, which is actually pretty unique. So there could be an opportunity to look at there. I'm not making a promise that we'll have a bridge, but it's something we're exploring. And if not, any other safe crossing methods, above-ground, below-ground, at-grade, we'll be pursuing with that study. And then we've been getting funding from the Mass Gaming Commission, a few hundred thousand dollars a year, to explore what we're calling the Bike to the Sea, which is really building a connection from the Northern Strand Trail to the beach. And it's called Bike to the Sea, because that's the organization that helps see the idea. But even if you ask them, they tell you it's not just about biking, it's about walking, it's about rolling, it's about safely getting to the beach in a family-friendly way, which, again, I don't think we can go from points west to east safely like that today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Tom, thanks very much. The last item on the superintendent's report is just an update on our NEESK accreditation. As you know, we went through our decennial visit last year, and there was one finding that I wanted to highlight for the committee, where we did not meet the standard. And that was in our written curriculum. Where, really what they were citing is that we don't have a standard, one-way, that we are listing our curriculum, which would make it accessible and easier for students and families to take a look at. So let me just, why is this telling me that I can't share?
Like in our handbook?
No, no, the curriculum on the website.
Or just on the website?
Yep. So I'm just going to quickly share first. This is the piece of the decennial report that I'm referencing. This is on page 20 of the report, which will be published with the minutes from this meeting. And it's, you can see here, element 2.2A, "The school does not yet have a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses in all departments across the school." And then it goes on to say, "Some of them have it, some of them don't. It's not consistent. So we did not meet the standard." And the visiting committee talked more in depth about this later in the report, on pages like 33, 34, and 35, if you want to look at the details there. But what I wanted to do tonight was just show you what they're talking about in our curriculum online, and then show you where our curriculum directors have already started to do this work, and where we're going with it. So I'm going to stop sharing this document, and if I can figure out how, I'm going to go to the website. All right. Let me go here for a minute.
Dr. Kelly, was this entire report drafted by the commission?
Yes. Yeah, the school does a self-study first, and submits that to the commission. And the commission does use that as a basis for their report. So they'll look at, what did the school say about themselves, and then what did we see when we came to visit the school, and talked to parents, and talked to students, and talked to faculty. And they use all of that evidence together to come up with their findings. So let me just see here, if I go back to share. Hopefully, this will work. So I am just sharing the homepage on our website, on the Revere... So I am just sharing the homepage on our website, on the reverekt12.org website. And if you go under Departments, you'll see that there's a dropdown for curriculum. And within that, when you go onto that page, you see that each department has their own curriculum documents listed. And so I'm going to start by highlighting the ELA because this is the one that the visiting committee actually praised. And if I go into Grade 10 ELA, this is what the curriculum map looks like. And it talks about all of the different competencies from reading, writing, speaking and listening, and language, and it identifies all of the different standards, which are based on the Department of Education curriculum. All of our curriculum documents are based on the DESI standards, as they should be. But this goes into more detail, and it identifies the essential questions that every single one of the Grade 10 English teachers should be focusing on with their students. It gives some resources, which standards are being assessed when, some of the rubrics are embedded here, and it encompasses everything from assessments to ANCTEX to essential questions. And it's still a work in progress, there's still things to be added, but this format was what the visiting committee said. If you had something like this for every course and every class, that would really help kids, teachers, and parents understand what the curriculum is, and this is the direction you should go in. So just for contrast, I'm going to go back to our main webpage, which I just closed, I do this all the time. And now I'm going to show you what the math curriculum documents look like. Again, I'm going to go into Departments and Curriculum. And if I hit Math, and I'll go to Grade 9 again, which we'll call it Algebra I. And the documents are here, and there is a usage page and a year-long plan and the standards and all of that, but it's very different than what the English department looks like. And what the NEESK team said to us is, "You're making it hard for parents to be able to read this and understand exactly what it is their kids are learning, and so we want you to get this all in one format and make it all look similar so that parents know what they're looking at when they're looking at it." And so I'm going to stop sharing again for a minute, just to... That was to give you an idea of what the problem is. And now I want to show you... Goodness, did I not open it? Where we are. So Dr. Mokaba did meet with all of the curriculum directors over the last couple of weeks, and they took an inventory of where they are... Why is this not showing? In each department. So let me see if this will work. And so each department went in and took a look at, in terms of getting all on one page, where they are with their curriculum. And so if I go into STEM for a minute, if this will let me... It's not loading. Let me stop sharing for a minute, see if I can... All right. This will give you... What I've opened here is our special education document. And what you can see here is, for their English Language Arts, they have completed moving into the new format the high school is using for ELA Grade 9 and ELA Grade 10. And they made a note that said, "If we're going to have a new format, we just have to drop it into that new format." So the curriculum is ready, they do have to drop it into the new format because Dr. Mokaba did work with Mr. Bowen and his team to identify a specified formula that they're going to use, and then once that's completed, it will be uploaded. You'll notice here that in ELA, our special education team has work to do at grades 11 and 12. They started last year working on grades 9 and 10, and this year they'll work on 11 and 12. And our goal is, by the end of this school year, we will have the requisite standardized curriculum outline for every single course at Revere High School, including electives. And that's what Dr. Mokaba and the curriculum directors are going to work on for the school year, and will be updating the school committee in the spring. And hopefully, what we'll see is a whole lot more completeds than what you see right here. And so I just wanted to highlight that so that both the committee and the public know that we are taking very seriously the feedback that we got from NEESK, and we're working to address the items that they told us we should be working on.
Ms. Montarosa.
Just a quick question, is this report also going to be posted on the website?
Yes. Yep.
Mr. Kingston.
Dr. Kelly, I'm a little confused. On page 26, if you look at like 1.1A, it says it does not meet in two categories, but then if you go to page 18, it says it meets the standard. I'm just trying to confuse them.
So...
I'm happy that we did, but I just don't know why those two...
Yep. So...
There's a few categories like that.
Right. Let me explain how it works. So engaging in the NEESK process is ongoing, and there are different pieces that happen at different times. So the collaborative conference, that first column, the school's rating, is what happened five years ago. And so five years ago, the school rated themselves, "Does not meet standard on 1.1A, 1.2A, 2.2A", you see?
Yes.
And then after that comes the collaborative conferences visitor rating. That's the first time they came in, again, that was five years ago. And they... That's how they rated us, the same way the school did, except for on 4.1A, they... No, sorry, those are the same, meets the standard, I'm sorry. Then when we have the decennial visit, the school rerates themselves. So we do it... The five-year, we do the mid-cycle to say, "What are the things we need to work on?" And then they spend those years working on it, the school rerates themselves, and then the visiting team rerates us as well.
So where's the... Is the rerating on another page?
No, if you...
It says meets the standard. If you go to, like, if you go to 1.1A on page 18, it says meets the standard. That just meets the standard.
Okay.
But it's confusing to look at this graph, but yeah, maybe, I mean, I don't know.
It is, until you orient yourself to the whole report.
If they put the five years up there, then it makes a lot more sense.
That's right. And I think the key thing there for the reader at home who might be looking at this on another night, the collaborative conference is what happens in the mid-cycle of the decennial visit, and then the decennial visit is what happens at the end. So now we start a new 10-year cycle. But we still have to give them a report by the end of this year, showing them that we have taken steps toward whatever they said we should be working on. And so that's why the work that Dr. Mokaba and the curriculum directors are going to be doing is so important. We already have shown some progress, but there's certainly a long way to go.
Yeah, I mean, if our only fix is to, you know, reorganize our curriculum, then not so bad.
Yeah. And there's other areas in here too where they've said, you know, "Think about that, look at that," but it's not to the point that they're saying we don't... We haven't met that expectation.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Can I mention one more thing that I didn't put on my report, just very briefly? And I'm really just foreshadowing for next month's meeting. One of the things that came through in the legislature in the last year is a new policy that requires us to have a program for middle school students where they can understand what their options are for high school. So we're working with the middle school principals, I think we're meeting with them tomorrow or Thursday, I forget which, but we're going to put together a presentation for our middle schoolers that will include the different options that they have in Revere, what City Lab is all about, what Coast Collaborative is, what they can expect at the high school, including our early college and dual enrollment programs, and also what they could get if they decided to go to the Northeast Voke. And I was in touch with Dave DeBarry today. We were talking about making arrangements for the kids who are interested to go up and tour the Voke. I mean, they're building a new building that's going to open next year, so they're going to see a construction site, but we are... I just wanted to make sure the committee was aware that we are required to do that for all of our middle school students, and that we're engaged in that work as well. And I should have a full mapped-out plan for you at the October meeting.
Thank you. We have subcommittee reports. I don't believe we didn't have any subcommittee meetings, it's okay. And motions? No motions? Any special hearings? Unfinished business? Ms. Montarosa.
So we moved from the COW to the regular meeting, the Colby College field trip approval. In order to do that, we have to suspend our policy, so I would like to make a motion to suspend policy JHH in order to approve the field trip ahead of time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
With that, then motion to approve the Colby College overnight field trip.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yep. Mrs. Bronson.
Actually, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronston Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Montaroso?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Mayor Keefe.
Yes. Thank you. New business. Mr. Kingston.
I was recently at the Veterans Office, and I bought a brick for my dad. They have Veterans bricks, and I bought one, and while I was there, someone reminded me about something that came up last year at the council. This was a motion by Councilor Angela Corino-Swire, that the mayor be requested to establish a program in which residents, developers, corporations, et cetera, can purchase an engraved walkway paver for the purpose of raising funds to be deposited into the Revere High School Stabilization Fund. The program could offer pavers in assorted colors and materials to coincide with the tiered donation level, i.e. red 100, white 250, blue 500, gold 1,000, glass 5,000, and metal 10,000. The pavers to be used should be included in the union's bulk purchase of the materials used to construct the high school. I don't know if this went anywhere, but I think it would be a nice thing. I know that I'd be interested in purchasing one as a proud graduate of Revere High School, so I don't want to put any more work on the mayor, and I appreciate everything you do, but I would hope that something could be done with this, because I think people would have an interest in it if it was publicized and, you know, done in the right way. But it's something that I think we should really think about. I just wanted to bring it to light at a meeting so that people, you know, are somewhat aware of it, but I don't have all the nuts and bolts, so I'm deferring to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingston. We love more work. It's quite all right. I will review... It's the fun stuff, right? We will... I'll double-check. I know that I did respond to this motion, and it was something that we were going to consider. I wouldn't say that... How we should start. Obviously, I would imagine the brick pavers would probably be something that would be located at the school, part of a walkway, part of an entryway, part of the landscaping barriers, whatever it may be. So what I will do in the Hailing Garden, what I will do is I'll talk with our project manager of the school and see if this is something we can initiate, and maybe roll out a program later this year to, you know, send it out, get people involved, get people interested, get people to...
Selling them.
Pay, right?
Yeah.
But this is, yeah, this is definitely something that's worthwhile. We do have good news, if this project is a three-year project, we might have three years to get it going, get it off the ground, and then maybe start getting some donations towards it. But it's not... It was definitely not off my radar or our radar, it was probably just kind of shoved in some corner.
I didn't suggest it was, sir.
No, thank you.
I just wanted to bring it to the forefront so people know that maybe something's coming and maybe get some momentum, and, you know, there could be some money here. Thank you.
Oh, sure. I'll buy a brick.
Me too.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Ms. Rizzo.
Yes, Paul Revere did that in the past, and it went over really well. So maybe we can get some ideas from them.
Thank you. Great point. We're moving it up the list, okay? Gotcha. Thank you. Any other... Any other comments or new business? No? All right. We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronston Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Ms. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Montaroso?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Mayor Keefe.
Yes. Okay. Have a great night. Thank you.